This February 20th, 2025, regular board meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call?
Elizabeth Dolby, here.
Mary Lee Hall.
Here.
Samantha Hall.
Here.
William Hall.
Here.
Jeremy Hush.
Here.
Jennifer Hankel.
Here.
Nathan Hankel.
Here.
James Hollis.
Here.
Joseph Wilson.
Here.
All right, need to announce a couple of executive sessions that we've had. We had one on Tuesday concerning superintendent evaluation. And then one immediately prior to this meeting concerning legal special education and Act 93 matters. And then we are, will be having one just following this meeting, another legal concerning district property. All right, moving on to item 2.01, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Do I have any discussion? Any a's or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve, unless someone wants to split the mouth, we'll approve the minutes for the January 16th board meeting, as well as the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve both of those.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any a's or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries. Moving on to item four, our student representative report.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little congested yet again.
Everybody. Everybody is.
That season, so. Trying to keep it a little bit brief. So, last night was the Battle of the Buildings. And I'd like to give congratulations to the high school student team for taking home the win. And then, on February 25th, we have the Districtwide Orchestra Concert. I was previously in orchestra, that was always my favorite concert. It's always great to see how the skill levels progress from the little third graders up to the big high schoolers. Then, February 28th is the Swing Dance put on by the high school band at 6:00 PM. March 3rd, spring sports begin. March 5th is the SHS College and Career Fair at 5:30 PM. Then, on March 8th, we will be hosting the SAT. Not excited for that. The Chamber Orchestra Concert will be at 7:00 PM on March 11th. March 13th is Meet the Teams Night for our spring sports. Sorry, there's one more. March 26th is the Counseling Dual Enrollment Night at 5:30 PM. And then, just some other notes, the first ever winter carnival was very well attended. I'm very proud of everyone who showed up, very happy that everyone came. The one act play following that was also phenomenal. They always do a very good job. We're also gonna have the Theater Department performance of Bye Bye Birdie, which is gonna be March 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. So I'm very excited for that. And, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 5.01, educational updates by Dr. Repert.
Thank you President Hankel, School Board. Good evening. Happy to Lady Valentine, say to everyone. Also, I guess Punks of Tony Phil was correct. Maybe it won't last all four weeks, you know, that's the only thing we can hope for. But to stay within my theme of safe, supportive, and collaborative culture. As you know, safety is our number one priority within our school district. As our district continues to do whatever it takes to make Southern York County School District safe, supportive, and collaborative environment. With that in mind, I want to take a moment to celebrate a belated day of recognition for two very important individuals in our district. So could School Resource Officer Sergeant Daryl Smuck and D.O. Mendez please come into the boardroom at this time and stand at the podium? Oh, they're here. Yeah, no, no, you can come up a little bit. You know, at this time, you know, I just wanted to say that, you know, on Monday is a time set aside to recognize school resource officers. And, you know, Sergeant Smuck has been with us for a few months and made some tremendous impact thus far. Sergeant Smuck has been with Southern Regional Police Department for over 20 years. And he immediately was able to transition into his role and making his presence known, you know, throughout all the buildings, even at the events, as he was there last night at Battle of the Building. But also, I'd like to thank D.O. Mendez, you know, being our school safety officer. He's been with us well over 20 years, continues to make an impact on the lives of our students. And we're very fortunate to have these two dedicated individuals with focusing on one thing, the safety of our school and school community. So gentlemen, thank you for all you do, we appreciate you.
Speech.
So, as Dr. Repert said, I've been, I've been with the police department just coming, well, this may all be 25 years. So this transition is kind of a... If anyone told me I would have been doing this a couple of years ago, I would have said, "You're crazy." But, uh, we needed to fill the position. I told the chief I'd give it a shot till December and see how it goes. And like the first day in, I fell in love with it. So I went to SRO School in December and got that certification. And, uh, everybody's been, the teachers, the administration, everybody's been warm and welcoming. And students are awesome. And, uh, so I just appreciate the opportunity to be here and I'll leave it at that.
D.O., anything? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Under supportive, you know, now that we're back from the winter break, you know, my school visits have really picked up to at least getting into the classrooms in the schools about three times a week. Very grateful for our awesome teachers that we have within our district. The level of student engagement, content-focused discussion is superb. And that's all goes back to the lesson development of our teachers. I really appreciated the high-level questioning during the visits that I had specifically this week. Our teachers continue to focus on the 21st century skills of communicate, communication, collaborations, critical thinking, as well as creativity, and helping our students prepare themselves to be more successful in life. So for all the teachers and staff out there, keep up the great work. I appreciate you. I also want to take a moment to congratulate several of our students who had entered their artwork into York College of Pennsylvania's annual York Community Art Scholars Exhibition. We have 10 students in our district that have been selected to have their pieces on display as finalists for next Thursday, February 27th in York. So congratulations goes out to the following students: Abigail Apgar, Allison Bergman, Bella Brokop, Eliana Burley, Gillian Dance, Emily Marcus, Kristen Martin, Ava Maloskis, Scarlett Pennington Lindley, and Janessa Pinkney. For the collaborative, collaborative culture, Caleb hit on this Battle of the Buildings last night. It was awesome just to see that liveliness, the excitement within the buildings, coming to the, uh, come to the gymnasium. I know Caleb threw a shout-out to the high school team, but I will say, everybody was winners. Shrewsbury Elementary did win for the elementary bracket, but it was just an awesome event. Just a couple of reminders, Caleb, you hit seven of my nine, or seven of my 10. We do have a makeup session of a presentation that the district is hosting, an adult-only presentation by the District Attorney's Office on sextortion, sexting, and cybercrimes on Wednesday, March 5th at 7:00 PM. Information regarding that will go out from the district, but that is rescheduled from the one that was canceled during the parent conferences. We do have an early dismissal on Friday, March 7th. And the last thing I have, just to kind of go back to Punks of Tony Phil, let's have a warmer month of February. Or not, well, I guess the choice is not ours.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 6.01, public comment. I see we have two, and they're both public comment veterans, so just remember to state your name and municipality, and Val Dennis.
My name is Val Brown Dennis, and I live in Shrewsbury Township. And first, something to thank our teachers. Thank you also, Dr. Repert, for sharing about the cell phones, about the parents. As I've said in the past, we need to focus on cell phones and healthy parenting and respect. Above all, I believe that will change education. And we look at all these celebrations, and we also look at the reality of what does happen in our schools, in our communities, in our nation, in our world. There's a lot happening, as we know. So for our teachers, from Dr. Brad Johnson, education isn't broken because of teachers. It is broken because we ask teachers to be counselors, social workers, parents, and miracle workers, while still demanding perfect test scores. We fix the system, not the people holding it together. I was speaking today about dual enrollment. And recently, a district nearby dropped their dual enrollment because it was not economically feasible. Soon, we may be facing the potential destruction of the Department of Education. In 1988, the Secretary of Education was nominated with the intention to remove the Department of Education. Once he saw what the Department of Education was doing, then he changed and advocated to keep it. He wrote a book about that, The Thirteenth Man: A Reagan Cabinet Memoir. As a librarian, I often speak about books, and I hope some of you will also consider to take a look at another book called Cast by Isabel Wilkerson. I believe that the history of this book helps us to understand all the divisions we have and the challenges we have with speaking to each other and working together to move forward. So the federal government, those responsibilities that have been supported by the federal government will shift to the state and to our community, drastically increasing school taxes. If we are entertaining the idea of possible charter schools down the road, local school taxes would also soar higher to accommodate the drastic change and the excessive financial and legal challenges beforehand and the aftermath that charter schools have created for decades in U.S. communities. I absolutely agree that we need school improvement. I've worked on school improvement teams and led them for years. I hope we can all work together to see what makes a difference for our students, for their adult lives, for each other. And that's challenging right now. The how and the who are challenging for us to work on. Charter schools are often dividing rich and poor. Sadly, we have a lot of that in our nation today. Our schools divide into those groups, which is unfortunate, because all deserve opportunities and resources in a way that is balanced. Sometimes we have schools that are one religion or not that. All religions are in the United States and will continue to do so. So whether on a federal or local level, remodeling a house or a school is always cheaper than demolition and starting over from the foundation. And back to dual enrollment. It absolutely sounds like a wonderful idea on the surface, and I've had many students who've worked with dual enrollment. When we look a little deeper, there are some challenges. From an academic perspective, students and parents are often unaware that many colleges and universities do not accept dual enrollment credits or coursework. It's important to continue to communicate that. Colleges and universities are businesses that want their seats filled and their budgets filled. Sometimes academic rigor is sacrificed in order to keep students and to cover costs, and this is not okay. On many occasions, students had bragged to me that they took dual enrollment classes because they were so much easier than the AP classes at the high school. We have strong AP teachers here, and it's important to make sure we consider their work as well as the decisions we make for our students. Academic rigor has been tested by several decades of some parents who believe that learning should not be stressful or challenging. One parent said to me, "High school is for socializing, not for academics." I'm still recovering from that one. And most of all, I wanted to be able to look at February. There's just so much happening. I wanted to share a little bit of my thoughts with the dual enrollment piece. Why do we need Black History Month? I often hear that in February. I shifted. This week, I heard a woman say in a local business, "Thank God we got back our warrior. Now if we can just get Aunt Jemima back," a stereotype on pancake syrup. We absolutely need Black History Month. We have shared humanity. We have different experiences. And since the lines between church and state are overlapping, let us pray. God of freedom and justice, forgive us for the times we have remained silent or pretended that racism doesn't exist anymore. Forgive us for the times we've remained silent in the face of injustice. Rescue us from every form of fear, hatred, and prejudice. Amen.
Thank you. Captain Jack Smith.
My name is Captain Jack Smith. I am the commander of the VFW in New Freedom and also Shrewsbury Township resident. I'm here here twofold this evening. The first being, I'd like to thank two Susquehannock students for being employed at it, at our facility in New Freedom. And pardon me, I don't know their last names. I just know their first names. One of them is, both of them work in their kitchen there, part-time. One of them's name's Kayla, Kayla, and the other one's named Chloe. Ryan, I don't, I'm sorry, but I don't know which ones are which. So, but I would like to thank them. They do an outstanding job. Their service to the, uh, to the post is, even though they're being paid, it's one of these things where it's something we're doing, hopefully, the community teach. And the important things about having a job and being on time and everything else. I just thought I'd throw that in there. My main reason this evening for coming was, as an employee of the school district, as game help, I come to the gym quite regularly and do the timing for the basketball games. I also came over this year and assisted in the folding of all the flags that are in... What do you call that area? Is it the atrium? What?
The Commons.
Okay, in the Commons. Um, I worked with two of... I can't think whose name was. Two of the teachers, a teacher who taught history. Their class came down and folded two of the flags. The other flags were folded by Mrs. Patty McGee and my wife and myself. The maintenance department didn't announce any job at putting them all up and everything else. I have a little ritual I do every time I come here and every time I walk into the common area. I stand in front of these flags at attention, and 50% of the time, I render military honors to this. There's 23 flags up there for 23 students who gave their life and service to this nation. What I would like or ask, and I don't know if it's politically correct or anything else, that in the morning, when you have your announcement at school, if they could include in that every morning, a moment's silence for these 23 people who made the ultimate sacrifice for their nation. They are the ones who guaranteed the fact that we can come here and we can speak, we can hold meetings, we can say pretty much what we want to say in this nation. We can go to whatever religious services or whatever. But if I could, if I could do that, I'd really appreciate it. I have one more thing. Last year, I brought a flagpole up here. I do provide flags for every one of the sports fields here at Susquehannock in the spring. I would like to see them take that flagpole that I brought up and put it up on the track, because that's the only place that doesn't have one. So that's just a request, and it goes up there fine. The other flagpoles that are out there, I think three of the fours that we put up were put up by the VFW or members from the VFW. So, but if I could get that done this year. I'm getting a little bit older, and it's pretty hard to get down there with a post hole digger and dig, dig a hole. And I don't know exactly where they want to go with it. But I really appreciate it. And, um, we had a real good basketball season this year. I was really pleased. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, more discussion of public comment. Anyone have any discussion of anything that was said?
I love the idea of the moment of silence for those 23 students and those 23 flags. I think that's wonderful. And I appreciate those thoughtful gestures of our past. And soldiers, you don't really get to see that every day, especially in school. So I think that's a great suggestion. I love it. Thank you.
Just a quick question. The flagpole you're speaking of, did you?
It's out, actually sitting right out in the, uh, equipment shed on the football field. I brought it up last year.
Where was it supposed to be for?
Uh, it's supposed to be for the, um, track. That's the only field that I know of that doesn't have their own specific flagpole.
Is that true?
Because the baseball field has, baseball, the old softball field has one. They have one between them. The softball field down below Southern has one. We did not put the flag up that's at the new baseball field behind Southern, I believe, when they did that field. That was part of the budget for that field. And then, the main field was put, that flagpole was paid for by the American Legion of Climb Rock and New Freedom, VFW. And this one, I had bought it. I had put two or three at my house and put the flag in it. And so, so that one flagpole I had bought, I never got the chance to put it up. So I brought it over here so they could build it. It's a 20 footer. It's not a real large one. But it has the base, the whole nine yards is in there.
And the track currently does not have one? Is that correct?
I don't know that the track team plays the National Anthem before they start anyway. So I don't know if they've ever, like, we've ever, like, struggled to look for one because of that. Because it's, because they're not all together.
But I have a feeling that a track is game help.
Oh, yeah. I think it's a great idea.
And they do have a PA system there, because they do announce whatever. So they have a PA system there. It's one of the sticking things you put in the computer. You can stick that thing in there and like they do at the gym, and play the National Anthem.
Yeah. The problem is that they're not all together. They're down below and stuff. I mean, I'm not making excuses. I think it's something they should do.
They all have to report. The track all has to report to, I believe Mrs. Novak still building it. They all have to report to Mrs. Novak. Somebody from the, from each one of the teams has to. So it wouldn't be that hard before it starts, you know, to pull them all together and play it. Because we do it for other schools.
I agree. I just thought the throwers were always down in the throwing field. So I don't even think they're, yeah, they're not even up. That's why I was saying that. But I don't, I'm not against putting a flag there. I just was saying, I think that's why no one's ever said anything like, hey, we need that.
I'm writing down sticky thing. I don't know what that is.
I get it.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna suggest that we move item 10 point, out of respect for our guests' time, move item 10.03 up to right now. So I'll hand it over to our Personnel and Policy Chair.
Okay. Item 10.03 is the voting for our School Safety and Security Coordinator. I did want to welcome Mr. Lightzel here today. Thank you. We're so happy to have you. And so with that, I am going to make a motion to appoint Matthew Lightzel as the School Safety and Security Coordinator at a salary of $95,000 effective March 17th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any a's or abstentions? Okay, that motion passes, and we would love for you to say a few words.
So when I first came in, I had the opportunity to meet most of you, and it happened really quick. And I'm so happy that you are graciously posting your name tags in front of you, so it'll help reinforce that for me for later times. But be gracious with me as I learn all of your names over the next few weeks. First, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. Have you ever been in one of those situations? Have you ever been in, in one of those situations or making a decision or you arrive at a location and you think to yourself, it just feels right? And that's the way I feel moving into this position. For the past 30 years, I've had numerous different education, training, and experiences that I think are going to build the foundation and provide the foundation that's going to truly allow me to excel in this position. I, I do want to say that your administrative team puts on a heck of a, a process in their selection for a position like this. They really put me through the wringer and, and it wasn't an easy process and you should know that. And I, I want you to also know that as we went through that process and they were assessing me, I was also assessing them and assessing this district as a whole. And what I've learned through that process is, you know, I, I heard Dr. Rappert say a safe, supportive, and collaborative school environment. And those aren't just buzzwords around here. You know, I've, I've seen it in just the little bit of time that I'm here. It's not just something that's being said, it's something that's actually being lived in this district. And your district and especially just from the folks that I've met so far, your administrative team, they take safety and security very, very seriously. And that was important to me as I was considering moving into this position because I'm not one of those guys that just checks the box that, okay, we did this, we're good now, we met the criteria. I truly want to ensure that we are making this place as safe as we possibly can while maintaining a welcoming environment. And I think we can all have a good time doing it and I'm just really excited to get started. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Getting back to our regularly scheduled meeting. I'll bring up item seven. I'll entertain a motion to, yes, thank you. You're welcome to stay.
I've got a four hour drive.
Yeah.
But I will be back.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to, for the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
A motion, a motion and a second. Any, any discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries. And we'll move on to item eight, education, and I'll turn it over to our education chair, Mrs. Henkel.
Can we go ahead and defer to nine while Dr. Rappert is out of there?
Oh, yes, that makes sense. All right, we will move nine up.
Wait, he's back.
All right, going back. Back to education.
Just kidding.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Eight point 01 is quick data for high reliability schools. This is just information and you have attached the board briefing. So eight point 02, the guidance plan as mandated by Pennsylvania School Code in chapter 339. I'm going to give that to Dr. Rappert.
Thank you, Mrs. Henkel. Mrs. Henkel, do you mind if I go back to eight point 01 with HRS, please?
You have my permission.
Okay. One thing for the, for the board and the community, I have shared, you know, some of the celebrations of our district as we embraced and, you know, went down the path of, you know, moving forward with our dedication with Marzano and high reliability schools. And I wanted to share with the board this evening that we did receive, in, in front of my desk here, is a, a plaque that was provided to us from Marzano. It says, Marzano Resources High Reliability Schools, Level 1 Certification, Safe, Supportive, and Collaborative Culture, York, Sunday County School District. The importance of, of this is we are the first district in the state of Pennsylvania to be certified in Marzano Level 1. And as Matt had mentioned, we're not just, it's not just buzzwords that we're using. We take safety, import, safety as a high priority, being supportive of one another a high priority, and the collaborative piece. So this will be on display here in the boardroom. So anytime from this point forward, that'll be there. But a couple of people I, I did want to thank, I'm not going to say individual names, but Dr. Hughes, who, who was very instrumental in doing a lot of the legwork with, with Marzano and with, with their consultants as we're kind of moving through this process. But more importantly, our administrative team doing a lot of the work in the preparation within Level 1. But this can't be done without the teachers, without the students, and without the parents that have participated in the surveys. So I did want to take a moment, so Mrs. Henkel, sorry, I did not know that was coming up until it was sitting on my desk prior to the board meeting. But I want to take a moment and say to the board, thank you for supporting our vision of admission with having consistency throughout our district, common language throughout our district. And it's very helpful, you know, that, that we've received this as a district, so it's something as a district we really need to be proud of, so.
On that note, sorry, quick, quick, I just want to make sure everybody knows, the smell you're smelling, I won't name who, but somebody burned toast and that's, that's all it is. We're all safe.
I want to find out who.
Yeah, you too. Yeah, just didn't want anyone to worry because I was getting a little worried. But, but someone we won't name burned, burned some toast or something similar. So anyway, back to the education report.
Okay. So eight point 02, as Mrs. Henkel talked about, is the guidance plan, chapter 339. This is a very comprehensive plan that is approved every three years. And our district, and I'm going to have two of my colleagues speak to it, have gone through this plan and did an incredible alignment with our comprehensive plan. So there's some common language and consistency as we're looking at the different plans. So I want to turn it over to Dr. Rogers and Dr. Hughes to speak briefly about the process of what incurred with this because we're presenting it for information this evening and then in March it would have to be voted on so that we can send it off to PDE as it is due in March. So, Dr. Hughes?
So many, many years ago, we went through our initial training with the chapter 339 with many of our guidance counselors, of schools, counselors. And one of the things that we started to see is that it started to change very slowly where they would put out new templates and have new information that needed to. The chapter 339 is really a plan that tells us what our school counselors are doing to help support our students in career readiness and getting them ready for the job market and life beyond high school. So you'll notice when you go through the plan that there are several mandatory pieces. And one of the things that I have to give a lot of credit to Dr. Rogers, he really helped us go through and look at what original template was in the plan and then how we could realign that to the new templates that were coming out. So as we went through, we had our school counselors sit down and kind of go through the plan and edit the, what they're currently doing. As Dr. Rappert talked about, this is a three-year plan, so many of the items were from three years ago. So we wanted to make it more of, in alignment with what we're currently doing and where we're heading. So we wanted to look at our comprehensive plan and the actions that we're doing with high reliability schools and make sure that we're aligning, getting our students to be career-ready and building the warrior. So you'll see as you're going through, some of the things that were in there in the past are no longer in there because they're not required anymore. But you'll also notice that some of the language has changed because we're really looking and making sure that all of our components are really building toward that career awareness, career readiness.
So we also, before I begin, I also want to make sure that I am thanking the work that our counselors have done for the origination of the original plan as well as the work that we asked them to do at a quick period of time to realign things with this one as well, too. They, they were the ones that brought to our attention that they really wanted it to be a living, breathing document, something that they, was very reflective of their work. We thank them very much for all the work that they do each and every day for our kids, but especially in working with this particular plan as well, too. So a, as Dr. Hughes had mentioned, we, we wanted to make sure that, that this was reflective of the work we're doing for bringing awareness for career and education and work. Within that, in building in all of our focuses for HRS. So we, our, our folks put together some goals if they wanted to about the safety and safer and reliable schools and, and their supportiveness within that. So there, there was a lot of pieces that were built on that. It's one of the goals that we have focused in within that. We also wanted to then have our curriculum for counseling and the work that our counselors are doing to also reflect that as well, too, in what we're doing with building the warrior. So there's alignment that we have, that we put in there for our building the warriors and our focuses for, for that piece of our curriculum that we're doing. And so that is, that's reflective of our other goals that we put in there as well, too. So that is, that was a lot of work and a lot of stuff that, that we aligned with when, what our counselors have put together for us in, in the curriculum that they have already, but making sure that we're aligning it to where our focuses are for the building the warrior. I don't have that memorized. Maybe we can work for it, but it is all, and then how does each and every one of those connect with our career, the career, education work standards that are part of this chapter 339?
One of the other things that you'll notice as you go through the plan is that they are required to report out what do they, they do every month that goes in alignment with career readiness. Some of the different headings that you'll see in here are required from the state. So as you go through, once again, a lot of the pieces that are in here are directly in alignment with what we have to provide the state to fulfill this requirement.
Any questions? Thank you again for your leadership, but also, Dr. Rogers, I'd be remiss to say the work by our school counselors and their collaboration in putting this together was just absolutely phenomenal, but thank you for your leadership with this.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers and Dr. Hughes. All right, that brings us to eight point 03, which is the student handbook for the 2025-2026 school year. This is also information and Dr. Rappert, I'm going to kick that back to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Henkel. I would like to go back to eight point 02. I think I'm setting the trend here. I do want to follow up. There was a question that was brought to my, brought to me about what other plans do, does a district have to submit, you know, on a, on a regular basis? Chapter four specifies that there are, school entities have to complete specific plans and I'm just going to kind of walk through and kind of name those and what they are. Like our district is responsible for a professional development plan, which is Act 48. That's done every three years. That specifically talks about what specifically is done during our induction plan with our teachers. Well, sorry, the next one is our induction plan, which is every six years. That's for our new teachers. We have a student services plan, which focuses on the supports that our students need beyond the school counseling. So that's a plan that's submitted and it's done every six years. We also have a special education plan, which Dr. Rogers assisted in authoring in, in the last year. That's done every three years, as well as a gifted education plan, which is done every six years. And for several of the board members, you sat on our district comprehensive plan that's done every three years. So just to kind of have an idea, there are these requirements that we need to put together and show what we're doing specifically as a district and, you know, how often that they are renewed. Okay? So, Ms. Hall, I'm actually going to pass that over to you. So Mrs. Henkel, don't worry, I won't go back anymore. I think I'm back on track.
Say that now.
But regarding to student handbooks, just for the board, for information only, I just wanted to share with you that our school district is going to a one handbook model. And the one handbook would include elementary, middle, and the high school within one handbook. The purpose is for, you know, when I look at our parents that have students that are in multiple levels, I currently in another district have children in all three levels. So I had to review the elementary, the middle, the high school, sign off on each of those. What this does now is for parents that have students at multiple levels, we'll have one handbook that they're going to be able to go to and look at academics, look at code of conduct, look at rights and responsibilities, look at cafeteria, bus, transportation, everything. So it'll all be in one document and it'll be, if there are specific things for elementary, it'll be noted, elementary under a certain section. Same thing with the middle and the high school. Other districts have gone to this and I know it was a challenge and an, and an eye-opener and jaw dropper when I brought this up as an idea to not only administrators but schools, but they've embraced it and we're in a position that in March, that we will bring that draft to the board for, you know, information only, for approval then in April.
Fantastic. Thanks so much. Eight point 04, this is the agreement we have with Messiah. I'm going to go ahead and move to approve a memorandum of understanding with Messiah University for students to participate in dual enrollment courses at no cost to the district. May I have a second, please? Does anybody have any questions? Dr. Rappert, do you have anything that you wanted to add to this or no?
The only thing, Mrs. Henkel, I'd like to add is, for the board, you have approved several of the dual enrollments over the previous years. As our first speaker, you know, during public comment, you talked about, these provide our students those opportunities. So we're very fortunate that, you know, we have the ability to partnership with these universities and colleges and then provide these students the ability in order to take those courses.
Great. And I'd also like to thank the high school admin and parents that make these opportunities possible. Sometimes we don't realize the opportunities that are there and we are given, you know, advance notice through our admin and for parents to, to go out and put in for some of these. So thank you guys for that. Do I have any nays or abstentions for this? All right, that motion carries. Takes us to eight point 05, which is the additions to the field trips for the 2024-2025 school year. And I believe with this, so this is an action item, the, the only thing that we have here is that the Shrewsbury Elementary School Keystone Kids Place, space rather, we're trying to make this consistent among schools. And so we have those field trips with the other elementary schools, we're adding that now. So I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the additions to the field trips for the 2024-2025 school year as listed, indicated on the agenda. May I have a second, please? Does anybody have any questions? Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries. That brings us to eight point 06. Speakers approved through the vetting process. Again, this is just information and I would like to note for Mrs. Green, this is one through eight. Nine is exempt from this. Does anybody have any questions? And moving on to eight point 07, novels, textbook adoption. I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the following novel textbooks as indicated in the agenda. I'm not going to read their titles. Does anybody, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions?
How were they?
The one I am not an expert on at all and it looked good to me. It's the test prep. Give me quizzes later. I can answer all of your questions. The other one was a little bit more readable for me. Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries. Now we have eight point 08, stage one curriculum maps as district-wide master maps. Dr. Rappert?
Thank you, Mrs. Henkel. I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Hughes. She's going to speak briefly about the computer programming curriculum map.
So much like the drone book that was approved, as I was going through the computer programming, there was lots of things about Raspberry Pi and I learned a lot about coding. So this is a very interesting course and I'm just very glad that we have the opportunity to bring these courses to our students, such as the computer programming and the drone course. So we're looking forward to continuing to expand our programs. In addition to the computer programming, we have this evening an engineering seven, an English 11, and an English 12, Latin 1, Science an English Eleven, and an English Twelve, Latin One, Science and Literature, and our last one is Introduction to Government and Economics. We also have a U.S. History. So, we have quite a few maps coming through in the next couple of months. So, I'm very, very excited, though, at the hard work that's been going on. I want to take a moment to thank the, um, schools, the high school and the middle school and the elementaries have been able to allow me to work with the teachers during parent conferences. Um, if a teacher didn't have a time with a parent, we were able to get online and work together and be able to complete some of the maps and go through them. So, I'm really excited about all the hard work that's been going on and how this is going to continue to help us get ready for going into HRS Level Three Guaranteed Viable Curriculum.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the Stage One Curriculum Maps as District-Wide Master Maps, and Dr. Hughes read through them, so as indicated on the agenda. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All righty, any nays or abstentions, or any questions, sorry, guess? Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries. That takes us to eight point zero nine, which is our affiliation agreement between Holy Family University and our school district. I'll go ahead and move to approve the affiliation agreement between Holy Family University and Southern York County School District for the 2024-2025 School Year, renewing annually, uh, you know, mutually terminated. And so, uh, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Uh, with this one, this one is a little bit different. It actually provides more opportunities for our medical staff and nursing staff. So, that's a little bit different than just the academic opportunities that we have with other agreements. Um, does anybody else have any other questions? Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries, too. Brings us to eight point ten. I have no other items of business.
All right. That'll bring us to our, uh, Finance and Budget. I'll turn it over to our Treasurer.
Thank you, President Henkel. Uh, nine point zero one, Financial Reports. Here you will find Treasurer's Report, Tax Credit Report, Budget Status Report, and the Cafeteria Report for January. Quick rundown on the balances. Our General Fund Concentration Account started in the month with a $10,865,546.32 balance, ended the month with $9,573,904.94. Uh, the Investments Account started the month with $39,778,503.99 and ended the month at a balance of $34,835,000, sorry, $34,835,670.14. All right, it's doubtful. Uh, those reports are all there for your perusal. Nine point zero two, Review of Bills for Payment. Going to make a motion to approve the bills for payment as presented.
So, move.
All right, you got, we got a motion, a second. Any questions on this? Any nays or abstentions? Hear none, motion passes. Nine point zero three, Exoneration and Refunds. We have none. Nine point zero four, Budget Transfers. Going to make a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Any nays or abstentions? Hear none, motion passes. Nine point zero five. I'm going to make a motion to approve the York County School of Technology 2025 to 2026 Budget as presented here. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, uh, this doesn't represent an increase of about three percent year over year. Is there anything that you wanted to add to this, Mrs. Green?
No, I did review the budget in detail. Um, there are no new staff positions in the budget. Um, there, I thought it was notable, um, they are adding four buses to reduce ride times, so one of the things they really struggle with, um, is the ride time for the students going to York School of Technology. And then, they are also experiencing an increase in health insurance. There's about seven and a half percent. Um, based upon the, the estimate, um, our district increase will be about 3.63%, um, but that is projecting two and a half more students than we currently have. So, I thought it was very reasonable.
Okay, uh, any questions on this? Uh, any nays or abstentions? Hear none, motion passes. Nine point zero six, this is the Lincoln Intermediate Unit 2025-2026 Budget. This is an action item as well. Uh, I'm going to make a motion to approve the Lincoln Intermediate Unit 2025-2026 Budget. May I have a second? The overall effect on this is our contribution went down ever so slightly, uh, like a hundred dollars. Um, any discussion on this? Any nays or abstentions? Hear none, motion passes. Nine point zero seven, Budget Update and State Budget Information. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Green.
Thank you. Um, so, each month, we talk about something, um, unique to the budget. This month, I want to talk about, uh, the Governor's, um, Budget for this year. Um, it is, is different than what we've seen recently. Um, so, if you remember to back to some of the presentations that I made, uh, in the fall on the budget from last year, or this current year, actually, for 2425, um, one of the things, we have new funding streams. Um, and I caution that that does make me a little nervous, um, when we're putting money into new funding streams versus basic ed and special ed. We're kind of continuing down that path with this budget. So, one of the things, um, for this budget, there are very small increases in the areas of basic education funding and special education funding. So, for Southern, our basic education funding, um, per this, this proposal is only an addition of $49,000 or a half a percent. In addition, special education funding, uh, while it's 2.83%, it's only about $69,000. So, for both basic ed and special ed, that's only $120,000. So, very small in those areas. Where we are seeing potential money in, in the proposal is in the adequacy funding. Um, so, there's about $520,000 under adequacy funding. But again, that one always makes me nervous because those streams tend to go away easier than basic ed and special ed. Uh, we tend to, we tend to hold basic ed, special ed, uh, and not really lower those. Um, these other funding streams, as I showed in the fall, go up and down, um, and when they need to find money, they find them there. Uh, so, that does make me nervous. Um, the other thing I think I said in the fall when, when special, uh, we got money for cyber charter schools, about $136,000. I said, be careful, because that one comes and goes, um, usually goes, doesn't come. Um, so, that is not in the budget, uh, the Governor's proposal, so, um, that's a hit of about $136,000. What is in the budget, um, is to go to, um, a standard amount for cyber charter schools for tuition. That would be wonderful, but that has probably been proposed for the last 15 years, and we've made no movement on it. So, does make me very nervous. Stay tuned. Uh, the one thing also, last year, PASBO, so, the Association for School Business Officials, said, "We feel pretty comfortable that you can budget some, if not all, of the money in the Governor's budget." They are not saying that this year. They are basically saying to be very cautious. So, um, as we head into the budget, I think we have to really wrap our head around how much of this we are going to put in there. We tend to put in about two percent for basic education funding. Makes me nervous because we're not getting two percent. So, uh, as we're working through it, I think that's the one thing we really need to, I'm going to continue to listen, learn, talk to people, but, um, this proposal makes me a little nervous at this, at this point. Again, the $529,000, $520,000 is great, but where it is with strings attached makes me a little nervous. So, if you look at it overall, um, in comparison to our whole budget, there's really not a whole lot here, but we'll have to, as I said, we'll have to look and see now, we're going over to the House and Senate, see what they're going to say, but we won't know that by the time we pass our budget. I, I'll be honest with you, we've never known that in my 27 years when we passed the budget, so there's probably not a chance we're going to know that by the time we have to pass ours. So, that's kind of where we are. Um, but let me, let me finish on a positive note, because I really like to do that. Um, you know, as we're working through the budget, when we presented in November, of course, we're, we're kind of making sure we're, um, covering everything. Um, do feel like we're going to be able, March, in March, we bring the, the detailed budget to the board, um, in Finance and Budget. Do feel like the numbers are coming in better than we thought. Um, that's what we want. We never want them to come in worse than we thought. So, um, as we're working through it, um, it's manageable. So, we'll be bringing the, that detail to the board, um, on March 18th.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Green. Nine point zero eight, One-Time Purchases. Going to make a motion to approve the one-time purchases totaling $24,529 and the associated transfer from regular education salary surplus. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on this? There is one item in here that, um, the flooring, that's going to come a later meeting.
So, yeah, there were two items, um, in the briefing, um, that we had talked briefly about at the last meeting that are not included in this $24,529. Um, that would be, um, the, uh, fitness equipment at the middle school and the associated flooring in that space. Um, so, we are going, we are continuing to work to get that flooring number.
Okay.
Is that separate equipment than the treadmills and the ellipticals that are mentioned?
Those, those are not in this, $4,000. They're, they would be come at a different time, because we don't want to get the equipment before we would have the floor to put them on, so.
Yeah, we need the floor to get the equipment, so, more chicken, egg.
So, this includes the other items that were listed there, the vision screener, uh, the cameras, and then the, um, format printer.
The printer, yeah. Any discussion on this? Any nays or abstentions? Hear none, motion passes. Nine point zero nine. Going to make a motion to approve the following agreements related to the E-Rate Mini-Bid for Technology. Agreement with E Plus Technologies for 26 UPS battery backups, five-year firewall licensing and five-year access point licensing at a total cost of $203,090.80. And two, an agreement with Integral One for network switches at a cost of $5,916.24. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Uh, any nays or abstentions? Hear none, motion passes. Nine point ten. I'm going to make a motion to approve the, a list of qualifying applications for the Volunteer Firefighter and Emergency Services Tax Credit Program totaling $41,000. Now, I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, just want to touch on the numbers. This actually is proven to, if this program continues to grow. Uh, first year we implemented this was 2022, and we had 55 participants qualify for it. 2023, we had 70 qualifying applicants, and this past year, 2024, we have had 82. So, it is growing and, uh, helping to support our local EMS and, uh, emergency services, firefighters. Uh, any discussion on this?
I do think it, uh, is probably worth noting that that rebate amount is $500 per individual. So, as you can see, at $41,000, it affects a lot of people that are giving time and serving in, in our community. Um, so, although $41,000 is not a small number, um, it is, um, across a vast number of people who are, uh, serving our community. So, it's a, it's a nice thank you for the time and energy that they put into our EMS.
Yes. Uh, any nays or abstentions? Hear none, motion passes. Nine point eleven. Going to make a motion to advertise for bids for student Chromebooks for the Chromebook Replacement Plan for the 2025-2026 School Year. May I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion on this?
The first one went pretty quick. So, I'm sure that the community will look forward to snapping these up, too.
Uh, this is for selling.
Oh, what am I doing?
This is for putting out to bid to purchase our replacements. Once we replace them, then we'll have some, some to load.
It was a hot commodity, I have to say. There was some disappointment.
Okay. Uh, have a motion, second. Uh, any discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Hear none, motion passes. Nine point twelve. Going to make a motion to approve the York Adams Academy Budget for 2025-2026. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, this is for one seat for us to have available to us, uh, for alternate placement. Uh, any discussion on this? Any nays or abstentions? Hear none, motion passes. Brings us to nine point thirteen, Other Items of Business. I have none, so, I'll return it to you, to President Henkel.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, Item 10, Personnel and Policy. I will turn it over to our Personnel and Policy Chair, Mrs. Samantha Hall.
President Henkel, Item 10.01, uh, we have the proposed 2025-2026 and 2026-2027 School Year District Calendars. Um, and I just wanted to give, um, a little, um, just background on this. So, um, a committee of 22 members, including professional staff, support staff, administrative staff, parents, and students, met several times to work through the process of developing district calendars for the next two-year cycle. And I thought it was interesting to note, um, because I didn't know how these things are made, so thank you for including that information for us in the briefing, but the 25, 26, and 26, 27 district calendars very much mirror the format of 24, 25 in terms of the first student day being on a Tuesday for grades K through nine, and then, of course, um, the Wednesday for the grades 10 through 12, and ending in May, which I know is always super exciting for, um, parents and students alike, and probably teachers, too. Um, a Tuesday start date followed positive feedback on the back-to-school activities for elementary schools occurring the week prior to school starting, so we're just continuing with that. Um, regarding the specific 25, 26, this schedule is able to extend the winter break by one day to avoid returning to school on a Friday, January 2nd, 2026, which I don't think anybody would like, so thank you. The 26, 27 schedule extends the winter break by being closed on Wednesday, December 23rd, 2026, so that our last student day and graduation occurs on the last Friday in May. Um, and then, just a word about our, um, in services, the number of full day and half day in services are the same, and the only notable difference is that the one at the end of the year, the full day in service, is actually being moved back to, um, the beginning of the year. So, just a little background on that, and thank you for the work on that. Um, so, I would like to make a motion to approve the 2025-2026 and 2026-2027 School Year District Calendars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? Um, any nays or abstentions? Okay, that motion passes. Uh, Item 10.02, um, the first reading, um, of the Board Policies. So, I'm not going to go into too much on this, because we did have a policy meeting on Tuesday, but as per our Board Policy Process, at the January School Board Meeting, the Board distributed, or the Board received the policies that were presented and discussed on Tuesday at the February 18th Personnel Policy Meeting. Um, tonight is the first reading of those policies. The policies will be published for public review following, um, this meeting, and then we will move to a second read in March with a Board vote, and upon passage of the vote, the policies are final approved and effective. So, just in terms of grouping, we had one new policy, 11 updated policies, three retired policies, and three that are being merged as part of a project that we started in 2023. So, again, this is just for information only. Um, 10.03, we already did. Um, 10.04, we have, um, a resolution for America 250PA, and, um, I had heard of it, but I just wanted to give a little brief description that, um, in 2018, there was a plan put together to, um, plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th Anniversary, which is the 75th. of the 250th anniversary, which is the semi-quintennial, right? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, of the United States, and specifically Pennsylvania's integral role in that event and the role of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And if anybody's interested in this, that more can be read about this initiative at So I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution supporting the Pennsylvania Commission and York County Commission endorsing America 250PA to educate, preserve, innovate, and celebrate for the United States' semi-quintennial. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, remember when they came to Southern Elementary?
Yeah, that was great.
So that was Senator Kristen Phillips Hill, and she was here, as well as some local authorities, and the Keystone mascot was here.
That was great.
A lot of fun for the kids over at Southern.
Yeah.
Yes. Very good initiative.
Yes, thank you. Any nays or abstentions? All right, then that motion carries. And 10.05, other items of business, I have none, so I will turn it back over to you, President Henkel.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 11, Buildings and Grounds. I'll turn it over to our Buildings and Grounds Chair, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, President Henkel. 11.01, Buildings and Grounds Report for January 2025. Mr. Buffington.
Yay, Mr. Buffington is back.
I'm back.
Welcome.
I would dance, but not quite yet.
We saw you dancing prior.
Right, right. It's good, yeah, good to be back. So the monthly report, certainly as we all know, the snow has a cost, you know? It's January, it was a costly month. Hopefully, as I heard Dr. Rep. say earlier about the groundhog, hopefully the snow isn't too bad as we're continuing on through winter. Any other note I think I have with the monthly report? Didn't note, we're real close, a couple hours, we're going to have the baseball scoreboard hooked up, so that should be ready to go for the spring sports. But certainly any questions on the report, more for information.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 11.02, the water test report for January 2025. That is there for our information. Moving on to 11.03, Siskel and High School Project Financial Report. Mr. Buffington.
Yeah, so kind of looped through. So with the financial report, and particularly looking at the, as you can see, the original budget and remaining budget, just under $900,000, as well as, if you flip to the second, we go through the contingency and the change orders, contingency changes in January, so you can see that. And as we had talked, you know, for several months, you know, the allowances now are at zero. But certainly, you know, as the project, you know, was completed and they're working through the closeout. Last I spoke to the construction manager, it was about 75 punch-list items, and contractors were working hard to finish that up. With a project of this size, to be at that point, I'm pretty pleased, you know, with that. So we'll continue to push forward with getting the project closed out.
Thank you. Moving on to 11.04, we have the proposed schedule for the feasibility study. That's there for our information. Do we, does anyone have anything they want to discuss about that timeline? Any input? So obviously, you know, it's sort of building blocks one upon another, and, you know, as we move through the process, certainly there are benchmarks we're trying to reach, but also, you know, if we're required, more attention or time is needed, that may have ramifications along the summer that the project or the work would get done in. But I do think it's a very, potentially very large expenditures that I think is going to need proper due diligence from the board. But I do think that there is decent time built into the schedule, and barring any, you know, major reconsiderations, I think it's something that is achievable.
Mr. Hall, do we, would you anticipate that we would get different options for the, I'm just trying to understand.
Yes.
I believe with the building project, there were three options that were presented to the last board, so is that what you anticipate, whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
And we had even discussed multiple approaches to whether it be greatest needs or whichever way that it is, but multiple approaches looking at ways to, you know, achieve some of our greatest needs, objectives, in maybe smaller bite-sized portions, so to speak. And I do think that there'll be flexibility in it for us to at least have some maneuverability in what we choose to do or not to do. And of course, then there may be things that, you know, we have to, you know, dig a little deeper on. I think if there's anything that would consume some time, it may be that, you know, digging deeper into whatever the various greatest needs are, so we can have adequate understanding.
And that would be at the May board meeting, that we would potentially have some of those ideas of what those recommendations would be? I just want to make sure I have it in my head straight.
Yes, they'll be presenting.
Right. And we would have more time to think about it.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have change orders approved on site. We received change order MC010 as a credit of $10,655 approved on site for the Siskel and High School project. So it's nice to see them the other direction.
We like credits. Although, hate to break it, I can't promise any more credits at this point.
We'll take them while we can get them.
Yep.
Okay, this next item, 11.06, is an action item. It is a motion to approve advertising for bids for the HVAC air filters for the district for the 25-26 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
So as in the past, this is a bid to purchase the necessary filters throughout the year, and this is something that we handle in-house, the actual changing of the filters, as we handle in-house. Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to 11.07, an action item, a motion to approve the purchase of a maintenance vehicle from Whitmore Auto Group of Mount Joy, utilizing CoStar's pricing for the cost of $48,525, and dispose of the 2009 Ford F-250 truck using municipal bid auction. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so if I could open up the discussion, I think we all are aware of the potential budgetary shortfalls that, you know, may be coming. We don't, you know, have a total handle on that yet, you know, moving forward. And unlike the other purchases that we just approved, you know, the vision screener and the security cameras and things of that nature, which definitely have direct student impact, you know, I think this is something that maybe we could hold off, see what things are looking like when we get on the other side of the budgetary process, and then make the decision. Even if we were to end up in the next budget cycle when it was approved, there is, you know, consideration for replacing of another vehicle. Basically, we would be staggering one if we ended up getting into the next budgetary cycle. I'm just concerned that we may be spending money on a maintenance vehicle that we could need to be sure we're giving everything we need to our students. So that's my perspective.
What's the, I guess, if the question is replacing it now versus several months from now, what's the rationale for doing it right now? Is there a compelling reason to do this right at this moment? Since we have these uncertainties, is there a compelling reason to do it this month rather than a few months from now?
The trucks available for purchase, it's on the lot. My understanding is trucks are and vehicles are still difficult to get. This vehicle, the 2009 vehicle, has rust with it. I was actually underneath the truck today looking at it, and my personal recommendation would be that we do purchase a new vehicle. Certainly understand the concerns that were mentioned. This vehicle, besides being a vehicle that's used by the maintenance department, also is used by the band. They'll be towing the trailer this Saturday with it. So certainly, you know, if you, vehicles and rust and things like that, it's significant. You know, its inspection is June, and we'll see, you know, if it can get through inspection and what, if it can't, what that cost would be to get it to inspection. I noted the bed rails, actually, I didn't want to touch them because I could put holes from the rust in it. So the thought is that the value of the trade is probably at the highest right now and will continue to decline, is my thought. You know, so, and we believe, actually, Mr. Carrington did a great job with putting the old van on the municipal bid and received, we got $3,000 for that. It wasn't inspected and it wasn't, couldn't get out of second gear. This truck would be a little different than that, but I still see decline, but we do believe that we would get more than $3,000 for it. So certainly, you know, these vehicles that we have, there's four of them, you know, and obviously we know there's three campuses, you know, so we have plows that go on several of them, so that at the same time, we could be plowing, snow plowing on the main campus and the two elementaries, as well as salt spreaders. Now, we all know that we have a contractor that does that as well, but there's points where if we get a quick snow, the contractor may not be able to get here, and we've had that in the past. So all of a sudden, our maintenance crew digs in, and, you know, I'm thinking of one in particular a few years ago where we had all those vehicles in operation because we needed to get the buses off the campuses, as well as, besides the snow, the band, and just general maintenance responding to the buildings and things, you know, so.
What are, I just wanted to add to what you're saying. So we talked about it several years ago, but if you were looking out the window at 2:00 today, it was really snowing and it was actually laying in places. So we were geared up to, because we can't get our contractor out that fast. Obviously, our buses take out, go out of here at 2:50 every day. So we were gearing up to, if it continues to, now it stopped and we were okay, but we were out salting and our folks were out salting and everything. But that's the case where we just need to be, have the equipment to be able to get our buses off campus, our kids home. So there are, there's been a couple times this year where we've kind of been geared up. Luckily, it's kind of not been heavy, it's not been too bad, but we just need to be ready if that's occurring, so we can get our kids home.
I would maybe like to see an option of a used option as well? Or what would the cost of repairs be to get this back to functional? Is this gas or diesel?
Gas.
Gas. Not high mileage at all? And obviously, it's not going very far, but for that, you know, obviously it is older, I get that, but I would, I would like to see some other options than just a brand-new truck.
Yeah, one thing I would point out is it does go with the band, so I know they haven't gone to Florida lately, but it does go, it does go out of York County. You know, so, but yeah, one of the challenges, you know, we certainly can look at used vehicles. Years ago, because of insurance with a vehicle that got, was wrecked, we did purchase a used vehicle, but typically, we haven't done that. The, the pretty big discounts that we get, I'm not so sure that the used vehicles, we're going to get that discount, the CoStar's discount, which is significant.
What are the years of the four vehicles? So this one is a 2009, and then the other three?
Yeah, 2009, 2010, 2015, and 2017. So the thought is, because the 2009 is kind of right behind the 2010, has similar issues as the 2009, but if we would purchase one in this budget year, purchase one in next budget year, most likely it's at least five years until we would need to purchase another one.
Right.
What's the reason for using the oldest truck to pull the band trailer when they have competitions? Why wouldn't one of the newer trucks be used for that?
That one has a cover cap. It's been one that's been used since it was new, you know, I believe. But certainly, some of the other trucks could be used for that, you know, they do have tow packages, packages.
The cover cap, it's a ball hitch, isn't it?
What's that?
It's a ball hitch, isn't it, on the trailer? It's a ball hitch on the trailer, correct?
Yep.
So what does the cover cap have to do with it?
They store stuff.
Instruments and other things in the back of the, besides the trailer, also storing stuff in the truck as well.
The maintenance department, you mean?
No, for the band.
And the band, yeah. The band can use that as well.
Yeah, they put stuff in the bed.
Would we be able, just to, it would be nice to know what a used vehicle would cost, just to see, just to be able to answer the question.
Well, I'm interested in knowing, you know, if this were, you know, because we're just looking at it and saying, there's some rust under there. I have a truck with some rust under it. I'm not using it to pull the band trailer to another city, so I get that concern, but we do have newer vehicles that could be used for that. So the question is, for what it does, is the rust to a point where it's a problem? And I, I mean, since we haven't had it inspected and we haven't looked at what it would cost to repair it, I'd like to know that before making a decision on a new truck, like what would be involved? Because you said you don't know the cost to repair it. If it's close to failing inspection and failing inspection, what is the cost to repair it? If it's a couple thousand dollars, maybe that's, maybe that's the better way to go for the moment. Obviously, you don't want to do that. At a certain point, those costs get to the point where you're better off buying new, but.
Yeah, certainly, you know, as we looked at that, I believe it's going to, would require taking off the bed, putting on new rails, most likely, likely putting on a new bed.
Do we know what the cost?
I can get those costs.
Okay, yeah, I'd love to know that, because if that's the main thing that's wrong with it, you know, and we can do that, since it's not high mileage, it's 88,000 miles?
Approximately.
That's not high mileage. If there's one thing that's wrong with it and we can fix that rather than buying new.
Yeah, I would just point out, the worst is the, in my opinion, the bed rails. But it's significant, the other rust spots and things. We actually had, if you can picture, we have steps, there's a rail step on both sides, there was a rail step on both sides. One of our staff members stepped on the rail step on the driver's side to get. One of our staff members stepped on the rail step on the driver's side to get into the vehicle and actually, because of the rust, broke off. Luckily, they didn't end up like me with a broken leg or a twisted ankle or something like that. Today, as I was looking, you know, at the vehicle, I told our staff, we're taking the other step off the passenger side because I see the same thing going to happen. You know, so, yeah, and certainly, if anyone wants to see the vehicle, it's currently down in the, down in the maintenance shop and we can set up a tour of the vehicle.
I'd like to know the repair costs for the things that are, like, if there are certain things that absolutely need to be repaired, like the bed rails and, and like you're saying, the steps, I'd like to know what the repair cost is for the, the things that are critical to repair before deciding that we need to replace it with a new one. Because we do have several that are newer than that, so if there are certain applications where we don't want to use an old, an older truck, we have options. But if, you know, if what it's doing is just kind of workhorse work around the campus, I'd like to know at least what it would take to just keep it in service.
As well as the certified pre-owned options?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there a cab or bed topper included in this? Because I, is that what you said the current 2009 has, it has a?
It does. Currently, we don't have a topper on that, on the one coming in, but we would look at options and potentially transfer the cap from the one to the other. But yeah, the current new one that we had priced out did not. Again, one of the things, you know, as we'll pull together repair costs, the other thing that's going to fluctuate is the, I believe, would be the cost of, of the, of the truck, you know. The new, new vehicles, they are difficult to get, you know, but certainly, you know, we can come back and visit it later.
The 2010, is that, I mean, is it the same make as the 2009?
It's a Ford F-250.
Or all Ford.
Are they, is it, is it, I mean, obviously, if you're seeing rust on that one, is this one also displaying the same rust?
Similar, similar things are on, are on the 2010.
Are the 2015, the 2017, are they as well Fords?
They are.
And the one we're looking at is also a Ford.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if, if certain model is prone to these rust issues, is there, but again, you're talking 14-year-old, 15-year-old vehicle, but still, is there, are some models more prone to rust in these areas than others?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, we have other makes of vehicle. The cargo van that we have is a Chevrolet. The 1984 stakebody truck is an International, you know, so we're not stuck on Ford, you know? And one of the things as we were looking for, we didn't look for used vehicles, but we did look for, for other options. We got a, one of the other options that we had was a leftover model. Unfortunately, it got sold. You know, so for a few thousand dollars less, we could have got a Chevrolet, one year older, but not used. But as we were putting the board briefing together, I got the call from the dealership that it was sold. So unfortunately, not, not an option that we had. We had looked at vehicles over the last year and looked at different dealerships, and they're difficult, difficult to get.
So do we plow and spread salt with all four trucks?
There's a mixture. This one would, would use for spreading, but did not have the plow package on it. The other three, we have, have plow packages on. So we can plow with three and spread salt with three. So the thought behind that is to make sure we have one on each campus. So at the same time, we could be responding to all three campuses.
Do we, what, do we do any preventive maintenance to try to prevent rust?
Absolutely. One of the things we do is wash the, wash, wash the underside. I actually need to do that at my, so if anybody hasn't done that for your own vehicle, I'd encourage it to do it, but yes, we actually set up and wash the underside. They're not always in, kept in the garage, you know, with the number of vehicles that we have and things, they do sit outside, but yes, we do preventive maintenance with washing the underneath and, you know, taking care, taking care with that, including with salt spreaders and, you know, rinsing them out and, and things to, to try to prevent the corrosion from the salt.
I think I heard a couple of different options that the board would like to maybe see, looked into. Do we, do we want to potentially table this?
I mean, if that's what the board wants.
I mean.
Table it. I mean, I already have it under motion. Do I need to rescind it or can we just table it?
We can motion to table it.
We can, we can move to table it while it's on the, yeah, while it's on the floor. All right, I'll move to, to table item 11.07. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on tabling it? Any nays or abstentions?
Nay.
I'm going to say nay also.
All right. Two, then that, that motion to table carries.
Okay, moving on to 11.08, replacement of select roofs at the main campus. I have a motion to award the base bid in the amount of $2,441,400 and reject alternates number one and two to J.M. Young of Belleville, PA to replace select roofs at the main campus, which includes roofwork at Southern Middle School, Siswanaka High School, and Southern Elementary School. Do I have a second?
Second.
So this, with the rejection of the alternates, this would do all of the roofs here that need to be done here on the main campus, correct?
Yes.
Do we have any discussion?
We already talked about the grant money that was received to help with these, so I expected it.
Close to a million dollar grant, so we'll never, we'll never get it better than this.
Well, and this, this company has done work for us in the past with success.
Yeah, all four, all four companies that we received bids have done very good work for us. Yeah, we were, we were pleased with the bids.
Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to 11.09. This is also an action item, a motion to approve assumption, an assignment agreement with the Fairfield Company and Fairfield Acquisition Company. So this, do I have a second?
Second.
So this is in regards, and Susan, you can correct me if I'm wrong with that, the company that did the electric work here at the school is essentially being bought out, and this is an agreement that protects the school for the warranties going forward that we will still, our interest will still be covered.
Yeah, I just, I'd tweak just slightly, they're, they're actually selling to one of the owners, so it's basically moving from one owner to another owner. And I just want to make sure we have it correct for them, minutes, it's Farfield, the Farfield Company.
Thank you, Susan. Any more discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to 11.10, we have here for our information, use of facilities, as you can Moving on to 11.11, other items of business, which I have none. Mr. President.
All right. For item 12, I'll turn it over to our Transportation Health and Safety Chair, Mr. Hash.
Thank you, President Engel. 12.01, student transportation report for January 2025. The report is there for your perusal. 1202, memorandum of understanding between Southern Regional Police Department and Southern York County School District for the next two-year period, as required per the existing agreement. We are just re-upping our agreement with this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any questions or comments on this? This is just an agreement that if we have an issue or emergency, they are the ones to assist with our response. Any other comments? Any nays or abstentions? That motion passes. Moving on to 1203, second quarter discipline data. I'll get turned over to Dr. Ruppert.
Thank you, Mr. Hash. So for the board, just wanted to share just an update regarding our second marking period discipline, as we take a look at the columns for the first and second marking period. Just a couple of items, you know, that I've focused in on previously. Number 15, racial ethnic intimidation. We had three additional incidents for that third, for the second marking period, as well as all other forms of harassment. We did one incident. And the reason why I bring those up specifically is anytime we do have a Title IX, which is either sex-based or discrimination, harassment, other forms of harassment, there's more involved to it. So as we talked previously, when I've reported discipline, the board has asked us to come back and revisit those, those specific areas. The other one I wanted to, I did want to point out, which is the 22 threatening school officials or students. We had, we had six, so we did have an increase, so we have 10 for the, to this point. And just another, for your awareness, with our threat assessment process, whenever the threats are made, it could be something very minor to, you know, a direct threat that is made to an individual. We go through an entire process to determine the seriousness of those threats that are made. Some may be considered transient, where the student, you know, made the comment, but, you know, recants it, feels bad about it, you know, tries to make amends, but also to the point where some may have made a threat out of true anger, and then we have to take a look at what supportive measures we need to put in place, not only supportive measures for the complainant, but also for the respondent, the student that made, made the comment, along with consequences that may be issued with that. And if we flip over to the backside, can you just slow down? This is just a comparison between second marking period from last year to this year. A couple that I did want to make note with, go similar to our last page, on the other side, under the racial ethnic intimidation. In the marking period last year, 2023, 24, second marking period, we had six. We had three this, this year during that marking period. But I will say that I attribute a lot of that to the continued education from our administrators going into classrooms, reviewing the handbooks, talking about, you know, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, and then also, when there are violations with that, you know, the supportive measures or the consequences that go along with that. So altercations, we did see an increase from last year at this time to this year regarding altercations. But please keep in mind, altercations could be a simple, we have, there's a disagreement, similar, if you're looking at the fighting, but we're looking at something minor that occurred between individuals that didn't result in the physical altercation, I would say the fists, or even law enforcement getting involved, because in many cases, at the secondary level, when there is altercations that occur between students or the fighting, we do get Southern Regional or Sergeant Smuck does get involved in those, determine whether or not additional charges would need to be filed based on their conduct within the school. So that's just a summary of the second marking period discipline report. Any questions?
Yes, Dr. Ruppert, thank you so much for the report, and I appreciate all that you give and additional information.
Thank you.
I do have some questions about cell phone infractions with this year's new policy, wondering how that's going, because there's other opportunities for the board to support staff to be able to teach the children without having their cell phones, with the canvas bags that they can put them in, and the magnetizing equipment that we can get grants for to help inhibit use of the cell phone when we're not supposed to be using that cell phone. So, right, we're here to learn and engage in class. So I just wondered how that's going with the staff, how students are responding respectfully to those rules in the handbook, not to use that cell phone and not be tempted by it while they're learning in class. So I just wondered if you had any information about that in general.
Mrs. Hall, if, if it would be okay with you and the board, I would like to gather some specific data from the, from the beginning of the school year, because that is not something that we have here as a state reportable. But then I can not only speak with each of the buildings, how that process is going, but also the number of incidents or concerns that we have, and I could bring that back to the March Board meeting, if that's, if that's okay with everyone. So I'd like to be able to share the actual data, because I'm not, you know, I wouldn't say privy to, but, you know, specifically, when we look at the state reportable, that didn't fall within there, in that category, if that's okay with the board.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it'd be good to have both, you know, quantitative data is great, but also, it'd be great to have impressions from staff, because it's, it's, it's going to be the sort of thing where they're not going to be able to say, oh, I have this many times that I told a child to put their cell phone away. But they're going to have an impression, it's, you know, they're less distracted now, or, you know, it's less of a problem, or it's more of a problem, you know? So qualitative feedback would be good.
I mean, the one that I can share, and I'm going to put Dr. Bryson on the spot, too, because we're in classrooms, because we're in the buildings, don't see the cell phones out much. High school, they do have the opportunity between classes.
Sure.
You know, and in the cafeteria. But in classrooms, I have not seen students with the devices out. And the thing is with, and I know Dr. Bryson does the same thing, we don't just go into the classroom, we're interacting with the students and, you know, seeing, you know, what's going on, you know, during the instruction. So I haven't seen, like, the misuse or the, I would say even more so the abuse as we had prior to putting in more strict, you know, expectations regarding when students can use them. Dr. Bryson?
Yeah, K-8, I don't see them at all. I mean, we're, K-8, they're not to be out, they're in the bags or lockers.
Wonderful.
They're gone. Not to say there aren't incidents where the kid has it in their bag and it comes out, but I'm not seeing it that much. Yeah, and I think, as Dr. Ruppert indicated, they're out, I mean, high school kids have them on their desk or whatever, they walk in and put it on. I don't know that it's a battle between cell phone teacher and student, Caleb, but, I mean, I haven't seen it, but you're there on a daily basis, so.
I'm only ever in a few rooms a day, but I don't ever see, like, extensive usage, and if someone is, like, caught, they just immediately put it away. There's never, like, a fight of sorts. So I think it's definitely improved since last year, though. I've noticed a lot less usage.
That's good. I don't think anyone on the board really wants to take them away from students, per se, you know, and have that autonomy of your own items, but I think it's important to know that those rules are being followed, and there's something else the board can do if it's not.
Well, and I, I would like to thank the high school administration specifically. As Dr. Ruppert had pointed out, so many informational stuff we do at the beginning of the year, which I know they follow up with throughout the year when they start to see it, as, you know, something like that, as late as now, we're using it more. But I think the message went out that, like, you know, take a look across the, across the U.S. where districts are banning them or locking them in bags, and you create this whole, like, system around the cell phone, and really sent the message that, hey, we don't want to have to do that.
Definitely.
So this is what, you know, we all need to contribute to not forcing us into this situation where we're locking them in bags or something like that.
I definitely want to support the staff if it's an issue, you know? At least there's. something we can do.
And another anecdote, the times that I've been here for lunch in the cafeteria, you know, you know, you, you hear so much, it's like, okay, you go to the cafeteria, all the kids are sitting there on their phone eating. But that's not what we have here. It was, it was very.
And they're laughing.
Heartening. Right. It was very heartening to see, you know, like tables of kids just sitting and talking. It was like, it was, there was volume in there, not tap, 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 which is really good.
That's better than most adults.
Yeah.
It is. Yeah. Good. Yeah. Go to a restaurant.
Being with the people they're with.
That's right.
So that's really good.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
So I will come, for the March meeting, I will, I'll come back for an update. So Jeremy, we'll just put that as other business then. You okay with that?
I'm good with it.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Ruppert.
Any other items of business? All right, back to you, President Engel.
All right, I'll turn it over for item 13, our athletic report, to our athletic chair, Ms. Dobbin.
Thank you. Item number 1301, athletic report. The Warriors had another strong winter season. As we enter the postseason, here are the current highlights. Girls' basketball. Warrior girls' basketball finished the regular season third in the YAI AA Division Two. The Warriors qualified for both the YAI AA Championships as well as the PIA AA Division Three Championships. With the win over Lamb Peter Strasburg on February 17th, the Warrior girls' basketball team qualified for PIA AA State Championships, which begin March 8th. Their next game will be on February 24th at West York High School at 7:00 PM for the PIA AA District Three Quarterfinals. The Warrior wrestlers finished the regular season YAI AA Division Two runner-up with a league record of four to one. On February 14th and 15th, the Warriors competed in a PIA AA District Three sectional wrestling tournaments. Congratulations to the following sectional place winners. Hunter Anderson, sixth place. Dawson Zorbak, sixth place. Jaden Buckholz, sixth place. And Al Jones, sixth place. For swimming. Both the Warriors' boys and girls' swim team finished the regular season in third place in the YAI AA Division Two. On February 7th and 8th, the Warrior swimmers competed in the YAI AA Championships. Congratulations to the following medal winners. In the 200 medley relay, they got seventh place. That was Tommy Manassi, Chase Wright, Jack Hammond, and Ben Hollob. The 200 freestyle relay, seventh place, went to Cato Nguyen, Tommy Manassi, Elliot Jackson, and Jackson, and Jack Hammond. Ben Hollob got six points in the 500 freestyle. And the 400 freestyle relay, they placed seventh. That was with Cato Nguyen, Elliot Jackson, Ben Hollob, and Jack Hammond. On February 28th and March 1st, the Warrior boys and girls' swim team will compete at the PIA AA District Three Championships at Cumberland Valley High School. And that's everything I have unless anybody has any new business. All right.
Thank you. All right. Item 14, committee report, other business. I have none. Moving on to 15.01, legislative council. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Merrily Hall.
Thank you. So in federal legislation, President Trump issued executive orders providing school choice to families and supporting Governor Shapiro's intended lifeline scholarship program, as well as a clear directive for male and female sports moving forward. At the state level, as Mrs. Green was kindly letting us know about today, state level, Governor Shapiro proposed the 2025-2026 budget earlier this month outlining continued investment in public education and cyber charter school reform. So the budget would establish a flat statewide base cyber charter tuition rate of $8,000 for non-special education students and a tiered formula for special education students that is aligned with the actual cost of providing online instruction. So potentially across the Commonwealth, saving districts an estimated $378 million annually. Basic education funding would increase by $75 million. School faculty, or excuse me, school facility improvement funding by $25 million, special education funding by $40 million, and a continuation of the free universal school breakfast. So of course, this is very early in the process and after appropriation hearings, it'll be up to lawmakers to decide the final budget. But there's mixed feelings in Harrisburg. As the budget is very generous and covers all bases and satisfies all needs, the proposal is far reaching outside of revenues generated by the state of Pennsylvania. So unless energy productivity restrictions are lifted, the amount needed to further the budget is, is not sustainable without raising taxes for all Pennsylvanians. So it's proposing an $800 million tax, carbon tax increase and relying on tax revenue for goods that are not even approved to use in our state. So I'm sure in the weeks to come, there will be much debate and details unfolding during budget hearings that began Tuesday this week and they'll conclude March 6th. So the Department of Education is scheduled for budget hearings February 24th and the House, in the House and the February 26th in the Senate. And that concludes my report. So you could be glued to that. You can see all those hearings online if you want to. Exciting stuff.
York County School Technology?
I have two things to report. March 21st to the 23rd, they will be playing on their musical, The West Side Story. And then also, at our last meeting, we had a presentation from The Hot Rodders of Tomorrow. And I gotta be honest, if you guys have never heard of it, look it up. I forgot to write down the time that they did, but they rip apart an engine, well, they take it apart nicely, and then they put it back together. And I gotta be honest, they are rocking it and they are placing really high in Nationals. One of our Southern students was on the team and I never got his name, but he was on the team that placed second in Nationals and it was pretty cool. I went on Facebook and I watched a few of the, the like competitions. It was pretty cool looking. I was like impressed. And it's girls and it's boys and it's, it's pretty neat to see the girls out there taking apart stuff and putting it back together and, and them working as a team and it's just,
Can they replace the truck bed and truck rails?
I was thinking of that too. I don't think so.
Do they accept donations to further their cause? Do you know?
I'm sure they accept donations because they travel a lot of places. They do a lot of fundraising and I mean, it's just such a neat, they get up once a year and talk about this and they're so into it. And it's just so neat to see them so into something like that and loving it and traveling, getting to see places and, and work as a team. Like I said, they're divided into four or five different teams and, and they're all ranking pretty high in Nationals, which is pretty cool.
Yes.
So anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Are you 12?
I have nothing to report.
All right. York Adams Tax Bureau?
Nothing to report.
Southern York County School District Foundation?
All right. So the Southern York County District, School District Foundation has been really busy with many applications for scholarships and so excited for all who submitted and the good things to come. Can't wait for May. Great night. Battle of the Buildings, of course, was held last night and was amazingly full of community support. Tremendous thank you to the community for coming out and it was really chilly. So it took a lot to come out last night. So thank you. The foundation will meet again on Tuesday, March 11th and I'll have more for you on our March 20th meeting and that's it.
Thank you. 15.06, other items of business. I hear none. 16.01, the student activities report for January 2025 is attached for your information. We have 16.02, we have three resignations and retirements. It's like they're all resignations. 16.03, other items of business. I have none. Moving on to 17.01, I'll turn it over to Dr. Ruppert for this one.
Thank you, President Engel. As we're taking a look at the current enrollment numbers, home education maintained at 218 from last month, outside cyber at 83. Our Southern Digital Academy is currently still at two. And as you remember, at the end of this school year, we will no longer have students in our digital academy. And those students from that point on would be enrolled in the Lincoln Edge Cyber Program through the IU, which we currently have enrolled at 28 students.
Thank you. All right. Announcements by Board President and Superintendent. An education meeting immediately followed by a Finance and Budget Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, in the Thomas R. Hensley District Administration Center, beginning at 5:30 PM. And the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on March 20th, 2025, in the Thomas R. Hensley District Administration Center, beginning at 7:00 PM. Dr. Bryson?
Thank you, President Engel. On January 30th, Student Council organized the first annual winter carnival, which is kind of a follow-up to October Fun Fest and hosted by the High School Student Council. In addition, high schoolers also did a one-act play, which was mentioned in previous school board meeting, Beauty is a Beast, which was a really cool environment, really directed, produced, the whole works by the students and done in the commons area versus the auditorium. So it was kind of a real quaint experience in a different envi- environment forum. I want to also thank Ms. Rupert's business classes, where many of us, or at least a couple of us sitting around the table, participated in mock interviews with her students. And what I took from that is we're gonna be in very capable hands in the near future. Also appreciation for all those involved with our recent parent-teacher conferences. While the weather was not perfect, we still were able to, to have the opportunity to come together with the parents and, and discuss all the good things that are going on with students throughout the district. Also, a big thank you, already been mentioned multiple times tonight, in regards to last night's event, Battle of the Buildings. We're already exploring ways to maybe up the, or ramp up the hype prior to that event going into next year. But regardless, if you've ever, had, never had the opportunity to be there, it is really cool, kind of unite the community around an event like that. And also, students will have the opportunity to laugh at their teachers who do and go above crazy to, I don't know, insane with some of the, some of the activities that we do for fun. So thank you to all the staff who participated. It's one more night that they're given, given up for a really good cause with the foundation. I just, Dr. Ruppert said seven out of nine of his were taken. I'm, I'm like, that's it for me. They took all of mine by the end. So good job, fellas. And other than that, keep living your dream, even though it may be a little colder than anticipated.
Thank you. All right. Item 18, new business. Anyone? All right. No new business. So I'll move on to item 19.01, adjournment of the meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, we are adjourned.